Everyone, I'm Council President Larry Husher. I'd like to welcome you to the December 7, 2020 Town Council Meeting of Mount Airy, Maryland. And this meeting is being broadcast live at Facebook.com under the Town of Mount Airy and locally on local channel 23. Can also be viewed on Carol Media Center.org. And it's being conducted as a Zoom webinar. So if you would like to speak at the appropriate times, then you can use the raise your hand function. And you'll be recognized by Gina Campanelli, who is monitoring that. If you're using a phone to call in, then you would hit star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. You can also call in on phone number 4433985354. Again, 4433985354, if you would like to participate. So with that, I will call to order the meeting and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in that. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. All right, thank you. And I'll point out that it is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. So just want to recognize all the veterans out there in certainly a time when you can reflect on those moments in history. No presentations this evening, and there are no speakers, so we're going to move right on into the approval of the council meeting minutes and closed minutes. That's for November 2020, the Town Council Meeting Minutes. And then November 20, the Public Hearing on Ordinance 2020-23. And then the November 2020 Closed Meeting Minutes. And if a council member would like to make a, a motion to approve those, I'd appreciate it. Okay, Patty has made a motion to approve. Is there a second on that? Okay, council member Munder is seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye. Okay, and that is unanimous. Moving on to the Mount Airy Police Chief Reed's monthly report. He sent us an email indicating that he had some staffing issues that prevented him from being able to get our monthly report out. But he will be getting it out next month. I don't see Bruce Curley, I'm sorry, Bruce Walls in the group. Gina, is he an attendee or anything?
No.
All right, he did send us a report. They had 133 rescue calls. And I'll group the four counties together in terms of rescue calls, 133, and then fire calls, they had 34 for a total of 167 this month. So if you have any other questions about that report, please email Bruce Walls. Community concerns, citizen comments. Holly, I see where the phone number was now. It's under here. So are there any of the attendees desiring to speak at this time on anything that's not on the agenda?
Do you have somebody with a raised hand? Oh, went away. Okay.
Steve Trice?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and please go ahead.
Put my hand up and then I took it down because you said, did anyone have anything to say, but that wasn't on the agenda. I had a couple of things I wanted to say about the Harrison Lizer annexation, but it wasn't on the agenda, Larry. So if this isn't the appropriate time, I'll wait.
All right, I tell you what, I'm going to be given an update and we will recognize you at that time.
Okay.
And allow you to speak at that time, so it'll be a little more pertinent and fresh in our minds.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
I don't see anybody signaling to be recognized.
Okay. All right, moving on then, we'll get to ordinances and resolutions. The first one is ordinance 2020-29 to authorize a loan program to help offset the economic hardships related to COVID-19. This is for adoption tonight. It was introduced last month, but someone like to make a motion to adopt.
I will make a motion to adopt it with the amended version. Striking the first two lines of the ordinance stating the ordinance to amend ordinance 2020-13, which adopted and approved the budget for the Town of Mount Airy for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, as well as striking the very last paragraph after Mount Airy, starting with the word "that", all the way through line item 4A.
I think probably more needs to be stricken. I tried to send one out, but in my least here. I think in addition, what needs to be stricken, if you can just bear with me. The very last, on page one, where it says semicolon, "and that other provisions of ordinance 2020-13 shall remain unchanged", and as is, should also be stricken. Then on page two, at the bottom, where it says two of two, at the very bottom, the same thing stricken from the first sort of caption at the, at the bottom, where it says, "for purpose of amending, the budget ordinance should also be stricken." And then obviously, at the bottom, it should say it for adoption 12720 rather than for introduction. And they did just send around. Well, I meant to. I'll send around the, all those strikeouts. Not sure why they didn't take.
All right, is everyone comfortable with, with those, with that amendment before we ask for a second on that? Or does everyone know what Thomas had and what Pam is asking?
It doesn't change, change the amount. And all right, Tom?
Right, no, it just apparent. I mean, is this, I assume it's correct that this is already in the budget and in fact, under the general operating, as opposed to in the economic development line item?
No, it shouldn't be under economic development. Melissa? Yeah.
So it's, it's remaining in the economic development line item. We're not switching the line item?
That's correct. It's remaining in there as $33,770.
All right, so to simplify it is, we're, we're amending it because there is no budget amendment required. The money's already there. And, and it's there with that stated purpose. True statement? Yeah, okay, all right. So with that understanding, is there someone who desires to second Pam's amended or motion of the amended ordinance? Okay, Jason is seconded, and we're into discussion on this. So go ahead, Pam.
Tom and Melissa, I do need clarification so that I understand. The ordinance is simply authorizing us to use those funds for a loan program, correct? What, where my confusion is, when we vote tonight, are we also voting on the loan draft that EDC submitted?
Yeah, because that's, that's exhibit one, I believe. Yeah.
And I just want a clarification on that. Donna, Marie and I were talking earlier, and I wasn't sure if we had to come back again next month to get the actual loan program approved, or if these were coming together in the same package.
No, they're together in the same page.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding as well. And so. Yeah, so comment, did, did somebody or Melissa, did you want to kind of give us a, a overall summary of the ordinance? Or, or does someone, is there a council member who wants to speak on this now, or Pat?
I just have a question, and my apologies for not following this as closely as I should. But Pam would probably want to answer it. You know, I've been a supporter, especially early on, of helping our businesses. I just want to evaluate before this money is dispersed, that it's not just dispersed openly. I am aware of some businesses that are actually doing quite well at carryout. So I don't know that they qualify for the funds, or other businesses very well may need these funds. So I just hope, in the way that you're administering this, that you could talk to me to ensure that it's just not open to everybody, that we are looking at their actual situation before we disperse funds.
Well, yes, just, just like with the grant program we did, there, there is an application process along with qualification process and parameters that they have to meet to even be considered for the loan. And I believe, Melissa, didn't we have direction prior that it was the same panel of, I don't want to say judges, but same panel or same committee that would review the loan applications as we did with the grant applications?
Correct, yes. That is a mayor-appointed committee there, where there's a mix of some Economic Development Commission members, as well as a local banker and some town staff members to review those. As a quick overview, if I may, go into this. And what we have here is, under exhibit one is what I'm referencing here. It's an interest-free loan that's financed for 48 months with payments deferred for the first 12 months, so the first full year here. And then the first payment would be due on the first of that 13th month, so in the second year. And the idea here is that if the payment is past due 30 days, that a 2% interest rate per annum would be assessed to the remainder of the loan. Who we're looking for in this program would be those businesses who have been affected by COVID-19 closures and regulations during this past year, but also open up to any new or existing business expansion that is going to fill a vacancy that was left by the virus. Something else, it's, it is posed as an internal review process to start when the applications come in. It'll be processed by the town administrator. And then the town accounts receivable staff will prepare the package for the committee to review. Things that they're looking for here, I'm referencing now, page three of the exhibit. Of course, page two of three is the application itself and the request. But there are also attachments such as a cash flow projection. And we have a template that can be downloaded, so it's kind of an apples-to-apples comparison there, if they need one. Providing a 2018 and 2019 tax return, a year-to-date profit and loss statement, as well as a year-to-date balance sheet, and also current bank statements for their business or personal accounts. They're asking for quite a bit here. It's not a super simple application as far as, you know, somebody just signing up saying, "I need cash." The loan requests are between $5,000 and $10,000. So with that, this might help three businesses. It could help six businesses. And let me see, there is a section here for loan protection. We're asking for a personal guarantee at a minimum made by the individual. And if that is not preferred, there could be a cosigner on the loan, or we may be asking for a secured business loan, requiring some larger piece of collateral. And then last thing I want to share is that funds can be used kind of flexible for inventory, technology, any of their operating expenses. So a lot of these, I think that's where a lot of our relief has come in the past with grants related to operating expenses. But this is looking a little bit broader for their business. They could also do building improvements, so something that will help them really weather the storm. And it's open to all of the brick and mortar businesses in the town limits that contribute to our tax base providing services for the town. And that's the overview there. And again, it's just one application. And then, so it's essentially an overview page and then an application. And then we're asking for those required attachments and a signature.
So circling back to something Melissa said, the, the amounts we chose, $5,000 to $10,000. We took a lot of thought into writing this based on our previous conversation at the grant process. We wanted to make the dollar amount something that, one, could truly offer value to the businesses that need it. But then, two, limit, because we will be, I guess, administering this in-house, limit the cost of administering that. So not $31,000 loans, but, you know, somewhere between three and six loans. Again, in an amount that could actually offer assistance to, to help weather the storm through the winter, hopefully.
And these are also loans. They're not grants, so that I think that has some more value. I know we're, while we want to help businesses, we're also a conservative mayor and council. So congratulations, you've answered my question.
So I got a couple of questions. It, it does say in the package that a secured business loan, this loan is a loan that requires a form of collateral such as real estate or a piece of equipment. In the event that a company defaults on its loan, the lender, town, has the right to seize the collateral and sell it to recoup any balance. Do we, do we really have the ability to do that? Tom, maybe that's a legal question. Do we have the ability to seize assets?
Yes, if, under the loan agreement. You know, that, you know, they put up collateral, sure.
Okay, all right. If they default, okay. And another, I guess, a process question, Tom. I mean, somebody has to monitor these loans. I believe that the first time a, the concept of a loan came up, I thought there were some issues with the code. Are, are we allowed to actually do a loan program?
I think you can, yes. I think that's where I ultimately concluded. I don't think it's explicit, under either the state code or the town code. However, there's some very general provision, or the town charter. There's some very general provisions that I think you can fall under. So yes, I, I think loan program. And also, Melissa may, and Pam may correct me if I'm wrong. This is also not unprecedented. I believe that other municipalities have done it as well and reached the same conclusion.
Okay, all right. And, and I guess one more question is the town, if we pass this, the town will be doing it. My question is, and, and maybe Councilwoman Reed can, can provide some insight. I mean, is, have you heard of Mamza or another nonprofit doing anything along the lines of a loan or grant program for businesses?
So much like we have closed meetings, I can't touch. But I can tell you that Mamza is, has something in the works. It, it's not my, my story or news to, to share. I don't know, is that fair, Melissa? So yes, they are working to, to provide assistance to, you know, some businesses. Contingent, obviously, on something else. But yes, they are.
Okay, and the reason why I asked that is because I really believe that a nonprofit would be able to, to gain funds from, from citizens of the town, or, or, you know, or the people who, who go to those establishments and, that are hurting. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity to get, to get some people involved outside of government to help these businesses as well. And I would just, I, you know, I'm eager that that would occur.
So I, I can answer that very, very honestly and feel pretty good about my answer that, yes, that is happening. The only other thing that I would mention, one, we did do the community fund, which was really successful, you know, round one. But then also, a lot of the nonprofits are suffering as well, only because a lot of their fundraising efforts have been, you know, limited in 2020. So financially, whereas, you know, let's say if Mamza were able to hold all of our fundraising events, would have been a very strong position to offer a lot more financial help from their bank account. But that's not the case. But with that said, they, they are doing some creative thinking. Thank you, Kelly Patrick. And if all goes well, they have something very exciting to announce soon. But again, it's not, it's not my story or achievement to announce, so I'm going to leave it to them.
Okay, all right, that's great. I just, I just think there's a lot of people that would be willing to participate in that. Yeah, last question on my part. How, how binding is a, is, is a program, the program to the ordinance? And the reason I'm asking is because I know we passed a grant program, it was last fiscal year, and then we entered a new fiscal year and money became available. And, and I'm just wondering if, if the ordinance is, or if the, if the program is tied to the ordinance in a way that you can't deviate from the $5,000 to $10,000?
Yeah, correct. The, the program is exhibit one to the ordinance itself. It's incorporated in the ordinance. So this is, you know, by law, so really can't deviate from what's in the business relief program memo or exhibit one without a subsequent ordinance change.
Okay, all right, thanks. So I, I would say as well, this kind of a, you know, thank you to, to all the council members who have worked their way through all these COVID issues. You know, we did, you know, last fiscal year, we were able to bring in about 33,000, if I remember right, of which 17 businesses took advantage of that. And then we rolled into the new fiscal year, and there was another 25,000 that was matched to make it 50,000. And that was grant money, and, and that was distributed out. And now we have this loan program. So we're doing, we're doing a lot to help the businesses. And, and, you know, I look forward to COVID being done, so we don't have to do these because they, it just, it, they kind of rubbed me the wrong way, but, but it's 2020 and it's, it's COVID. And, you know, so hopefully, next fiscal year, we wouldn't, wouldn't want to be doing all these grant and, and loan programs, even though this loan bro, program will be something where we could potentially be following for, for four years, which, you know, it's, as a desperate times call for desperate measures. So kind of like the mayor, I'm, I'm not real excited about seeing money go out like this, but at least it's a loan. And at least we're going to see that, hopefully see that money coming back. And, and I guess, one last thing for I'm done is, David, are you on here? Yeah. So, hi, David. How confident are you that the staff can handle this loan program for upwards of four years? After the initial application?
Yeah, I think we're going to be all set up and fine to handle it. I have confidence in the community development group and also with our accounting staff that will be able to process it. I think we've almost had a trial run with the grant process. This kind of mirrors that. So there is a variance in there, but I think we're going to be fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that's, that's all my questions. Anyone else have anything, please?
Just sent out Larry, a, a new version by email that has all of the correct strikeouts and revisions that missed the motion, what I believe to be the motion on the floor.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tom. So.
Hey, Larry, I just have one question here. Looking at it, it looks like just the funds are only available until the end of this fiscal year, if I'm reading it correctly. Won't care, carryover?
That was my understanding. True statement?
All right, cool. That was it. I mean, it looks all right.
All right. Well, I'm not going to force anyone else to say anything. So if everybody's ready to go to a vote, we'll, we'll go to a vote on it. All right, all in favor of, of adopting ordinance 2020-29 as amended by Councilwoman Reed, say aye. Opposed? I think that was unanimous. So congratulations and good luck with the, with the program. And I hope it's, it's used well by the businesses of the town. So just one, one more effort to try to get through COVID. So. All right, moving on. Next is ordinance 2020-30, that's Developers' Rights and Responsibilities. This is for introduction, and it will be referred to the Planning Commission. I can, I'll go ahead and move to introduce. Is there a second on that? A second. Councilmember Munder is seconded, so that will go to the Planning Commission. So Roxanne is, looks like she's in the attendees list, so it's, it's coming to you, Roxanne. And congratulations on your becoming the chairman of the Planning Commission once again. So next is Resolution 2020-8. And the sponsor of that resolution is asset that be pulled. So that event will not be occurring, I assume, due to potential COVID issues that are going to extend to New Year. So I, I hate the event has gone away, but, but that is pulled from the agenda. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, Harrison LaSheer process. And what I was going to do is talk about the next steps on Harrison LaSheer. But I would like to let Steve Trice go ahead and speak at this time, if he would like to.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, great. So, well, first of all, thank you all for meeting with us. I think we met with all of you, Sands, the lawyer, at some point, so I appreciate that. I had one question and two statements. One, have we, meaning you guys, have you heard back from the IDA on the proposals that were sent over, I don't know, a month or two ago about the land swap, the well protection, et cetera?
I'll, I'll answer that, but go ahead with your comments and then I'll answer.
And then the two comments, first is, the corn is out of the field. So anyone that wants to come and actually see the property behind our homes is welcome. Larry, you've been here, and Pat has been here, and Carl has been here. So that's an open invitation to Jason, Pam, and Patty. If you want to come actually see what we're talking about, the property and the elevation change, et cetera, and the challenges that would be provided, developing that land, you're welcome. You have my emails. Feel free to reach out. And number two, with regards to, you know, slopping the land. Larry, I know you're going to speak about that, but I'd like you guys to consider if this does. Larry, I know you're going to speak about that, but I'd like you guys to consider if this does end up going through that swapping that parkland to, you know, the the portion of the property that's more southern, sets up the potential for that property to kind of be combined with Watkins. I don't know if anybody's really kind of noodled on that or thought about that. So, you know, for for foot and bike traffic and things like that. So if you think about having the park much more on the northern end, it's really a destination to drive. If it's, if it is something that goes through and gets the approval, if it gets moved, it would probably be, you know, something that could set up, you know, bridges and, you know, crosswalks and things like that to almost extend what's available at Watkins. So don't know if anybody had considered that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And that was it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Steve. So in answer to your question, we have not received anything back from the IDA concerning the issues which we asked about the land swap. We asked about a general map that showed the setbacks and everything. We we also had the water guarantee, which I'll default to Tom for a minute. Have you talked to the IDA about that at all?
Recently, and I've not received anything.
Okay, all right. And then we talked about moving the entrance down, and we haven't heard that on that. And and then the mayor brought up some stuff about burns and things of that nature to kind of create a buffer over to that district. So, you know, that's the long answer of no, we haven't heard.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, did you want to highlight? And probably you did. But one of the things that we were talking about when we asked for that print was we looked at the blueprint that we have, and both Council President Larry and Carl and I were against the construction, I'd say, occurring behind your homes. It's not the best place to put it. We asked to have it moved so your homes would not be impacted.
Great.
Larry, you touched on that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, we talked about a land swap of some type. I would, I would tell you, I don't want to get your hopes up because when we all these points that we brought up to the IDA were not received well. So they, they, you know, that that was their initial reaction when we talked about a land swap. They they were not real receptive to that. Or the only thing that had some traction to it was the, you know, was a way to guarantee your water, and that was actually more through the county because your county residents and Commissioner Boucher was hot on that as well. So, you know, I'll certainly reach back out there between now and next month and and see if we can get something more more firm on those. But you know, if Tom's not getting an email back, maybe I need to talk to the commissioner. And I think you should too. If you live on Butler Road, any of you, you know, should reach out to the commissioner and and, you know, and and give him a, just a little nudge in the right direction to make sure that 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 conversation continues, because I think that one has some meat to it. So.
Appreciate that. Well, we, most of us have reached out to Commissioner Boucher, and we'll do that again. And thank you and all for your support in swapping that and the well protections, et cetera. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Stephen, hold on one second. Larry, you and Carl, I couldn't take part. There was a phone, a phone call with the one lady. Did nothing happen there, huh?
Oh, well, all we, all she was doing was collecting that list of items, but we did not, we didn't get any response. You know, we, we, we talked to her, gave her the list of items and, you know, and and we actually saw who the chairman of the IDA was. So it's kind of a, it was more of a, hi, how are you? And here's the list, and we're waiting. And we don't have anything.
Yeah. Isn't the chairman that one particular, gosh, the guy from our area?
It's it's a lady, Carl, what was her name?
Chambers is the IDA chair.
Chambers, yes.
Okay, Carl, maybe I, I felt it was positive, and I guess we all three could look at something and see it differently. I thought they were pretty positive when we looked at that small strip behind Butler Road about moving it. Carl, I don't think Larry thought it was positive.
It's As kind of Larry said, I would not get the hopes up because unfortunately, the annexation agreement does state what goes where. Kind of. So, I mean, it can be done.
Yeah, I think it's easy. I think it's
But we would have to see the annexation, the way the annexation agreement's written, if I'm understanding it right, and Tom can correct me if I'm incorrect, is that it does state what goes where, parcel A, parcel B, so on, so on. And it can be changed, but the IDA has to agree to any changes that we vote on and recommend.
Well, Steve, I think this one's pretty simple. It's a narrow strip.
Yeah.
And I, and I know how strong Larry and Carl are and how much they want to defend you. And I know the other council members feel the same. I actually think this is an easy one. No construction back there, move it.
I appreciate that. And that's, that's what we're hoping for, is that the annexation agreement actually gets changed before it's ratified or approved, as opposed to trying to change it later, which I think to Larry's point would, or Carl's point, would probably be a tougher row to hoe.
Yeah, and that's, you know, when I'm, I'm going to talk through the timeline and and you'll, you'll see that there, there is time to to continue making your your voice heard. Again, it's, you know, probably Commissioner Boucher needs to be needs to kind of take front on some of these issues. So, I mean, I'm very supportive of them, but it's going to take more than just, you know, Carl and myself and and rest of the council in there. We need some county help. Okay.
Great. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. So what I, things are getting kind of complicated because it took me two cups of coffee to figure out that there's a word after annexation, and that could be annexation plan. It can be annexation referendum, or it could be the annexation agreement. So there's four documents out on the street right now. These are the four documents. But there's number four down there. All right. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, if anybody's looking for paper on this stuff, these are the four things that that are out there. And generally, the annexation agreement, the water sharing agreement, and the annexation referendum are all traveling together. Okay? And and then you have the annexation plan, which is what the planning commission just looked at at the, at their November 30th meeting and recommended approval of. So I could have rushed through that and gotten it on the agenda for this month, but I'm not trying to rush any of this. I'm trying to let it, you know, give everybody time to absorb it all. So the annexation plan is the document that will come before the council in January. Okay, and that will be voted on and need to be approved. The annexation plan basically is a rewrite of the annexation agreement and goes through all the all the intricacies of that. And the annexation plan goes to the county and the state agencies to be, or is it the planning, the actual planning commissions?
Yes.
Okay, so it actually goes to them, and then it comes back to us. The state requires 30 days. The county asks for another 30 days on top of the initial 30 days to review the annexation plan. And then it comes back to us, and that's when we go into a public hearing. So if the annexation plan is is passed by this council in January, then it starts a sixty day clock before we could have a public hearing. So we're looking at mid-March for a public hearing. And following that public hearing, then the annexation resolution with the other two documents would come before the council for a vote. And and I'm looking, I'm looking at Tom on my screen here for a vote potentially in April. Is is that a accurate timeframe, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So if you don't vote in April, they should not go through. I'm a little confused.
I'm sorry, ask that again.
Larry showed three papers, and he obviously knows more than I do about this, but I'm confused. We're voting for something in January, and then we're voting again in April. At what point can we not vote for it if they don't give us what we're asking for? And I think what we're asking for is really easy.
April. So the annexation plan is just a comment document. It's just a document that the state statute requires us to put together and the legislative body approve. It's kind of just a, so you got a document that summarizes everything so that there's everything in one place for the county planning department to look at and comment on, and same with the state. And then in this particular case, remember, there's the waiver that the zoning waiver that the commissioners would also have to review in that timeframe and grant presumably.
Well, it doesn't stop us from going from those things that I think we, we definitely, okay, good.
No, it's a, it's just a part of, it's really kind of like the setup to the, to the public hearing at which you'll receive comments in writing usually from the county and the state, plus, of course, public comments.
Okay, thank you.
After that, that you vote on the annexation itself.
Yeah, Steve, we're all going to be out there getting those things. I think they're all, I don't believe that they're stuck on what they got. I think it's better for them to work with us. Although they would go on their own, it's better to work with us, and it's better for us if they work with us. And if they're not going to do that, there's no benefit. So we'll keep pushing and fighting.
So, so I'm clear, the public comment comes after March?
The public hearing.
March.
Public hearing is in March. Okay, all right, sorry, I wasn't, sorry, I'm new to this, appreciate it.
That's okay. So between now and then, we can continue to to ask the IDA for the things that we've asked for. You know, a loose map, the other items, the water guarantee, question about swapping the land, question about moving the entrance. We can continue all those conversations as as we get to March. Fair statement, Tom?
Or even beyond. Remember, the last annexation, we got through the public hearing, and there were substantial negotiations after that. That was, of course. So really, the part of the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public feedback from which to negotiate further if that's what the public body wants to do.
Okay. All right. So hopefully that clears up some of this and and gives a little bit of relief to some people so they don't have to spend December not just dealing with COVID and and, you know, hopefully enjoying their holidays and not worrying about about us trying to press something through in a quick manner, because I don't think any of us are in a hurry after a decade of working on this thing. So.
Another decade, Larry.
What's that?
It's another decade's fine with me.
Okay, all right.
If it happens, I think it's fine with me and Larry and the council too.
Well, all right. Okay, so that kind of gets us through that. So I'm going to move on to new business unless there's any questions anyone has.
I just wanted to say to Steve, check your email, because I sent you an email about stopping by. And I'm not sure if you saw my latest and greatest, so.
I haven't.
Okay, okay. Just take a peek and we can set something up. Thank you.
And again, that invitation's to everyone, Pam and Jason as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, we have the recommendation for the Twin Ridge plantings, and that's under Barney Quinn's name. Barney, would you like to fill us in?
Sure. So as you know, the Twin Ridge pond is really moving along. They're looking at a completion date somewhere mid-January. I'm going to say maybe end of January. And there's another piece to the puzzle is is the plannings that go in with what's, you know, going inside the pond. That is separate from the contract that we've already approved. Another
I think we're listening here right now, Barney.
Carroll County did that for us, just like they did the pond. They came up two bidders. One that
Well, we had them for a while.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we lost you for quite a bit of that, Barney. And you're, you're still freezing up. Maybe did anyone have comments on this? No. All right, Patty, you live over there. Was, were there any concerns on your part? You're, you drive by this, right?
Yes, I drive by it. I walk by it. I listen to the big trucks coming seven o'clock in the morning. They're right there with the birds chirping. Yeah, Barney, I attended the meeting that happened last Thursday. And so we went over pretty, you know, pretty clearly what types of plannings they were going to be putting in. There's different zones that they have for the actual stormwater management pond. It's going to look much differently for anybody who might be listening right now in the Twin Ridge development. That wasn't a party to that meeting on Thursday last week. It's going to look much different. Right now, we have two ponds. It's actually going to be one big pond. There's going to be a dam that they're going to be reinforcing. And Barney had walked around and he talked to the people that actually back up to the pond, and they seemed to be very, you know, very happy about the fact that there was going to be plannings that would be covering up some of the eyesores. So the, the only problem I had was that what is happening, the plannings that would be done that would be adjacent to Deer Hollow Road or Deer Hollow Drive. Initially, they wanted white, white spruce or white pine trees with American holly bushes. And I, I just sort of feel as though the white pines are, you know, they're iffy as far as whether or not they're going to be growing and become lush, you know, they can be sort of spotty looking. They're not as hardy. So they did decide to change that to the white spruce. And I looked those up, and it seemed as though that was probably going to be beneficial. But I, for one, am not real crazy about having really big trees that are going to be close to the fence, because I think it's going to be a little claustrophobic. I'm hoping that they're going to be a little bit away from the fence and give us, I hope that they're going to be spaced out properly so that the town doesn't have to, in 20 years, start taking all these trees out, because that also was a concern of mine. But I spoke to Barney over the weekend, and I think we came to compromise. So I think that that will probably be taking place sometime in the spring. It won't be done in January, even though the workers will be done as far as what they need to do for the pond, but the plannings won't probably take place until sometime in the spring. So.
Great job, Patty.
Oh, well, thank you. I missed, I missed that being on Santa's sleigh, but I had to attend the meeting.
All right. Tom, does this, does this require the recommendation? You're muted, but I think you're probably saying yes.
Actually, actually, it does, because it's more than 30,000.
Okay, all right, gotcha. Okay, someone want to make a motion to approve the recommendation for the Twin Ridge plantings? All right, Councilwoman Washabaugh has made the motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Reed seconded. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Moving down to the Chick-fil-A PWA. So, Tom, I think you masterminded that.
Yeah. This is by and large, pretty typical PWA, but there are some negotiated changes that Yeah, this is by and large, pretty typical PWA, but there are some negotiated changes that I found acceptable, and from an engineering standpoint, Barney found acceptable. They are, by and large, fairly minor. With one exception, they're on things like timeframes to get as built, as built, reducing the penalty from not providing them timely to $25 per day from $100 per day, things like that, deleting a standard contract clause that we usually require, but didn't feel necessary in this case. And also to accommodate the fact that Chick-fil-A has, of course, sort of standardized set of national contracts to, to build these, so we didn't want to interfere with that. A few tweaks here or there. The only significant change, it doesn't affect the town, it just memorializes the fact that Chick-fil-A will get credit for their share of off-site improvements in the partial construction or beginning to construct the, this roundabout that is planned for this area ultimately. Eliminating the left turn movement from Ridgeline Drive. That, those public improvements are part of the bond that, you know, security they're gonna put up. So, and there's, you know, what they, they wanted sort of an act of God or what we call force majeure provision in there about timeliness in case of their non-performance or delay in their performance is not occasioned by something that they is occasioned by something outside of their power, so, which I find, so, this is up for approval.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review that document? And is there a motion to approve? Okay, Councilmember Munder has made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, Councilmember Washabaugh, seconds. Is there any discussion that's on? Say none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Not too far from number one with the Dr. Pepper. Okay, next is, I put this in there as a placeholder in case a mayor wanted to talk about any of the small businesses in town. Are there, is there anything you'd like to discuss at this time?
Yes, I would. Thank, thank you very much. This is actually pretty critical, very important. I have a little script here. I hope y'all would take into consideration, and I'd like to see if we can get your support for this. You may have heard that there's rumors that the Mount Airy Messenger was going out of business. Please remember, that is the only paper left in the town of Mount Airy. Towns around the state of Maryland are losing all their small papers. They may have others that are a lot closer. The Mount Airy Messenger is probably the most popular paper in town of Mount Airy, and also remember, it goes in our mailboxes. So, it's not thrown on the street. It's a very important paper, and it's not just important from that aspect, but it's very important to those that are not on social media. Part of the problem is due to COVID, as Council President Larry had mentioned, and thank you, Larry, for our discussions today and some of your input. That was great. But many communities, like I say, have lost their papers. To lose ours would be devastating. Our only source of news information would be social media, which in addition to being a great source, is also a source of information at times, a cruel source at time. Stories may flame up for a day, then be buried and missed, and missed by all, like many seniors that are not on social media. A lot of people aren't on social media. I think we all know the value. Again, I want to thank Council President Larry for adding this to the agenda tonight, for me to bring to your attention, and the great discussion that we had of the opportunities that may be missed if we're stuck with social media. One of the items we could bring up, for benefit from with the messenger, would be our volunteer acknowledgement. That doesn't really hit social media or the paper, but if we could work with them to do something, if we could add some benefit and start advertising more, and that's what I'm really talking about. We're not giving them a grant. We're not giving them a loan. I'd like to see us take a different approach to advertising. And that different approach would be a volunteer acknowledgement that Larry brought up, putting our town survey in the paper. Don't put it on social media, put it in the paper. And, you know, there's links. A lot of the younger folks hit it, but a large part of our community does think at it. Let me see, there's a lot of senior issues in town. What's available to the seniors? Colleen has been tracking that for our emergency response team. We can start printing that again. We have been printing that, but it's been a while. Let's start doing it regularly. Let me see what else. Councilwoman Patty, you could print notes about the veterans' flags. Maybe we could highlight those in the paper more. That would be a form of advertising. Councilman Jason, the green team issues and recycling that's happening. I see you responding on Facebook, but there's a lot of people that are not on Facebook that, you know, would benefit from some of your comments. Councilwoman Pam, a lot of your downtown events and fundraisers could all be, again, they're done on social media. Let's start pumping them more in the paper. Carl, Parks Events. A lot of the Parks Events that, that you're supporting and you know of. Our community team, Gina, I talked to her today. She would love that. They're doing so much, like with the sled rides and setting up Santa. And by the way, great job to our team. I think you all know that. People ask me, did I do that? I had nothing to do with that. I just showed up where our staff showed me to show up, and thank you, Larry, and people that jumped on there with me. Our town administrator could do a paper. We could do something on stormwater management that was brought up tonight. You know, a lot of people didn't count, catch the meeting, but Patty Washabaugh going around looking at the different trees that would benefit. Be nice to have an article on there. A lot of people in Twin Ridge would get that, that didn't watch the meeting tonight. It's not on social media. We could have a kids' note. Liaison articles by every council member, maybe like once a month or once every print. One of the council members can do a nice little highlight article. There's just so much. We could get our police to do some kind of ad about what's going on, what to do, safety steps. Again, I, I think you all are, are seeing all the benefits that we can get from writing, and it would just cost us to advertise more. I hear there's a pretty good mayor's report in there once a month that we would lose if we lost the messenger. And it's very important. Remember, it's the senior community, and those, not everybody's on social media. So, what I'm asking for is maybe we start to help them out. We advertise more. We've normally been advertising about $700 worth a month. There's certain things that were required to advertise legally. We would have to stretch that to $2,200 a month. But again, I think the benefit, it won't, it won't be alone. It'll be a benefit to the entire community to do this for eight months, a year. See how it works out. It's not gonna be permanent, and we're keeping this paper independent. My original thought was, okay, well, we'll come in and we'll be half the newspaper. Then I talked to our former mayor, and somebody said, no, you need to stay independent. You need an independent paper. So, we would remain independent and just advertise. Anyway, this is a great opportunity to reverse from social media and reconnect with the community. We're kind of going backwards, but it's a great way to reconnect with the community in a big way. Remember, it's the only newspaper that ends up in your mailbox. Also, for businesses that can't afford to advertise, instead of giving them a grant or a loan that we discussed tonight, maybe we can benefit them some way, and that's Gina's team, to advertise for them in the paper. Mount Airy is a good, is a, I don't know what the heck I wrote. But anyway, think about it. When things open up, as the vaccine starts to go away, we need to advertise especially to the senior community. They really need that in print. If we lose the messenger, we're not gonna get it to them. It'll be me and Larry and Patty and Pam and Carl and Jason handing out flyers. That's the only way we can do it. I'd rather have a paper do it. The cost is minimum. Again, opposed to giving them a grant, instead of $7,500, we'd have to increase it to $1,400 a month, and they needed some help with their computer. With your approval, positive thoughts, and love to hear your concerns if you have any, we may find it in the budget to do it. It's actually a small amount, and if it's not in the budget, I don't want to do it either way, even if it is without your blessing. We could, we could move forward with it, with your blessing. So, I, I, I hope you see the value. We get your support. So, please let me know if we can save this paper, save this resource, and serve our community in a better way. I'm done.
That's good. My only comment is that, you know, perhaps have the staff look through the budget and, and see, you know, what we have available for advertising. You know, I'm all for getting service and, and paying to get a service. So, I, you know, I, I think that would be fine. So, I guess that's the starting point is, is to, you know, see, see other ways that we can, you know, utilize their advertising service to benefit the town overall, so.
Good. Anyone else? Yeah, I'd want you awesome before we, we did that, so good.
Good, go ahead.
I just want to say, Pat, thanks so much for bringing that to the attention of all of us. I was not aware of that. And I, for one, am, am very adamant about having that paper, just for all the reasons that you stated. Primarily, for many of our seniors that are not on social media, this is the only time that they get that information. And I know it was such a big blow to our community when the Gazette stopped, you know. I mean, that was huge. That was absolutely huge. So, without the messenger, I, I think that we're really going to struggle to get a lot of the information out that we need to. And I love that idea of, you know, focusing on a lot of the different banners and focusing on the fundraising events and focusing on what Jason's doing for, you know, sustainable and the, you know, the recyclable, you know, initiatives that he's taken out and everybody, you know. So, I think it would be really helpful. So, if we can look into, if there's something that we need to cut maybe in order to do that, to keep this afloat, I'm, I'm all for looking into that avenue. I think it's really important.
Anyone else? All right, with that, well.
So, sorry, I'm delayed.
Go ahead.
No.
Councilmember Reed, go ahead.
So, obviously, for most of my events, I rely on Tony with the messenger to sort of capture and write that story, because it does reach a target audience in the town that I wouldn't otherwise meet. And so, Tony, if you want to have a conversation offline, you know, we can figure out some, some creative ways to, to kind of keep you here, because I don't know what I would do without you.
Be happy to.
It's like, like to say, I agree with everyone that has spoken tonight. The messenger is highly important for the town, especially to get the message, the messages out about events and social meetings and all the other things. And seniors rely on papers much, much, much more than so, social media. And I'll actually look forward to getting the paper every couple weeks and reading it to see what's going on. So, I'm, I'm in favor of it to at least give it a shot and see what we can do to save this, this precious town resource that's vanishing all, all over the rest of the country. So, let's try and keep it here in Mount Airy.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move into the.
I love that quiet Councilmember Jason Correa. I know he supports it.
He's been nodding. He's been nodding the whole way through.
I don't need to repeat everything. Everybody has already said it's.
Y'all are, y'all are becoming my favorite council. Thank you.
Give us a couple months.
You're good.
All right, moving on, we're down to the mayor and council report. So, we'll start with Mayor Rockenberry's report, and I think you have some appointments.
I do. Let me get to that, and while we're looking for that, I'm just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Larry, thank you for remembering. Carl, I do have a tie on, Christmas tie. Just want to make that clear. I also want to remind people that the park downtown is open. There is a fire pit. There's gonna be a permit that you have to reach out. Dave, we need that permit done to reach out. Larry, you'll be happy to know that scout leaders do not need a permit. They are fine. But everybody else is gonna need a permit. Scout leaders, we trust, with fires anyway. We have music on Main Street. We have, thank you, Councilwoman Patty Washabaugh, Mary Husharren, everybody that, Suzie, that made all those flags happen. I'm not trying to miss anybody, but we have beautiful veterans banners downtown, throughout the town. We have the streetlights. I went to Ashley to talk about illuminating some buildings, and she bought a guy in town that illuminated many buildings. So, it's beautiful. We have music down there. Please come downtown, witness all that, and enjoy yourselves downtown and take advantage of your town. And again, that's how we're gonna beat Amazon. You have to have an experience. So, with that said, I'm going into my people. One second, one second. Here we go. Okay, so, we'd like to appoint Doris Wiltshire to be appointed to the Beautification Commission. Darlene Davison-Union, she's actually an owner of Superfoods, to be appointed with Economic Development. And we'd like to reappoint Michael Dixon for recycling and sanitation. Your blessing.
All right, is there a motion to approve those appointees? All right, Councilmember Munder beat Patty back just a little bit. Okay, second? All right, Councilwoman Washabaugh, second. All in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. So, you have those new commission members. Thank you for volunteering, everyone. All right, anything else, mayor?
No, thank you very much. And remember, you're, we had our volunteers event Thursday, so. Look for y'all.
That Wednesday? I think it's Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Won't be there.
Wednesday, and then Thursday, I believe, is, is the menorah lighting.
That's.
Downtown.
See how much I need you guys and ladies.
I'll keep you honest. All right, next is beautification, parks and recreation, and that's Councilmember Munder. Please go ahead.
All right, we'd like to start off the meeting by saying Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all out there in the town of Mount Airy. So, I will start with the beautification report. The meeting was held on 11/17 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The main thing is that the 2020 Christmas ornament is now available for purchase via the town website. And as to lead into the mayor, what he just said about the Mount Airy Messenger and how important it is to the town, this was done before this, so it's not in, can, whatever, what I can't pronounce the word right now. Also, on page seven of the twelve, two addition of the Mount Airy Messenger, there's an SQR code that will take you directly to the page to purchase the Mount Airy ornament. So, it's very handy if you have that around and wants to purchase the ornament of 2020, that is Mackenzie of the Caboose, with a slight description on the back of the history of the caboose. Just dig up that Mount Airy Messenger and click the SQR code and go ahead and purchase it. Trees and shrubs for the dog park have been purchased and planted. Two benches for the dog park and a new picnic table for Best Pocket Park have been purchased. Most of the town gardens have been mulched for fall, and any needed pruning will take place in January. And as many of people have noticed, that the commission has done the annual thing of decorating downtown for the holidays. They decorated the booths to train stations, the railing along Main Street, Park Avenue, and the gazebo's at Wildwood and Best Pocket, Best Pocket Park. The next meeting will be January 19th at 7:00 PM, since there's nor, no meeting in December. The Rexon Park meeting, we had several presentations. Councilwoman Reed and Jade Kelly were some of the presenters. They presented a Come Play With Me Relay fundraising event to get funds for the new Come And Play, Play With Me Park that was going up at Watkins this spring. It will be held at Watkins Park, and I will let the Councilwoman Reed to give the details at a later date or at this meeting to inform us all of this wonderful and sounds like a very fun and interesting event. Eagle Scout candidate Jason Block gave an update on his project to install an eight foot by eight foot checkerboard in Summit Ridge Park. gave an update on his project to install an eight foot by eight foot checkerboard in Summit Ridge Park. Uh, the board gave final approval for this project. So that should be appearing at Summit Ridge soon. Town staff gave some updates from several outstanding pro- projects. The pavement for the ADA accessibility, uh, to the new Summit Ridge Pavilion has been completed. Two of the three, two of the three dog park pens have been closed for winter. This is a normal occurrence by public works for winter to let the, uh, some of the, couple of the dog pens, um, recuperate from the use that they get during the year. Uh, this is still true. The bathroom is at Watkins Park, temporarily closed due to COVID and the potential risk to town staff that cleans them. I believe that is still good to go. If it's not, I'm sorry. Uh, the caboose is closed temporarily due to COVID, but do look in the windows for some Christmas cheer. I've heard that there has been a family of gingerbread people that have moved into the caboose. So as you're exploring downtown, peek in the windows and to get some holiday cheer. Uh, Twin Arch Crossing is receiving some finishing touches in accordance with the agreement with the Brittany Manor Development. Developer Kristen and Pat Ellis gave an update on the proposed mountain bike trail for Windy Ridge Park. They received a quote for the trail design from Greenstone Trail Craft LLC for approximately fifty five hundred dollars. It was mentioned that since the town is at the beginning stages of the budget for next fiscal year, that this amount for the, to see what could be drawn up for Windy Ridge may be added to the next year's fiscal budget. Uh, they also informed the board of a People for Bikes grant of approximately ten thousand that will cover, that could potentially cover the, the, the design and some construction. A lot of interest needs to be submitted by January twenty second, twenty twenty one to be considered for the grant. And the next meeting will be held December seventeenth at seven P M via Zoom. So that concludes my report.
All right, yes, Pat. Yes, mayor, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'd like to ask for Carl Munder to give the first messenger liaison, uh, printed document. Carl, that was amazing. And seriously, that would be great in the messenger. Not everybody's watching the meeting tonight.
All right.
See something like that. It's a great example.
All right. Okay, uh, next is the Economic Development Planning Commission. That's council member Reed.
Yep. So happy holidays, everyone. I hope everyone has a very safe and fun season. Um, the Economic Development Commission did not meet in November due to Thanksgiving. Our next meeting is Wednesday, December ninth at five P M. Um, Pat, we have to talk about this on offline because that's actually the same time as the volunteer of the year.
What?
Yes. So we'll talk tomorrow. Um, on December.
Thursday. It's Thursday. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
On December tenth, which is Thursday, the town will be lighting the, the town's very first menorah. Uh, the ceremony will begin at five P M near the train station. Mamza is also hosting lots of holiday activities, including carriage rides, a candy cane crawl, brunch with Santa, and princess storytime. Um, they are also doing gift wrapping on Main Street, I believe, every weekend. Uh, for more information, visit their website at mountarymainstreet.org. Uh, the planning commission met on Monday, November thirtieth, um, relatively a, a late day for, for the planning commission. Um, Hannah Weber did send me an update. The, the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on December third related to the rezoning request of E C thirteen twenty twenty zero zero thirty. Um, she basically said they received a lot of written uh, comments as well as some call in comments in opposition of the rezoning request. Um, but also mentioned there was no timeline uh, given by the Board of County Commissioners for their official approval or denial of the request. Uh, so we're still waiting. Uh, the planning commission also held their annual elections. Roxanne Hemphill was reelected as chair and Bill Butts was reelected as vice chair. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, January twenty fifth at seven P M. Um, a side note, Carl, thank you very much for, for mentioning Eva's relay race. Um, it is not another five K. Um, I will give more information, but still working out some of the, the details before I actually come back um, to Parks and Rec and then eventually town council for resolution and final approval. Um, but basically it's a, and I always say it wrong, um, a Ragnar race. So it will be a twelve hour overnight relay race. Um, so it's a very new concept for Mount Airy, very popular in other communities. So we're going to give it a try. Um, but with that said, not another five K released this past week, which is also a fundraiser for the Come Play With Me Initiative to build a playground at Watkins Park. Um, you can purchase it at Mount Airy Liquors, Memories Charcoal House, Mount Airy Bowling Lanes, Anita's Liquors, Mount Airy Inn, Carter Q, The Upper Deck, J and P Pizza, Cryin' Johnny, Superfoods, The Links at Shaladon, Twin Arch Tavern, and Tony Locos. Um, and a portion of all those proceeds go directly to the foundation for the playground. Um, so if you like a good cold crisp beer, um, please go out and purchase it and support the foundation and the project. Uh, and that concludes my report.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. Okay, next is, uh, sanitation, recycling, and Mount Airy, uh, Sustainable Commission Council Member Corrigan.
Thank you, Larry. Happy holidays, everyone. I'm excited for the first, uh, lighting of the menorah this week. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, just a note about, um, trash pickup. If you are a Friday trash pickup that falls on Christmas and New Year's, your trash pickup will be pushed back to, or pushed ahead to Saturday. Um, that will be in the messenger, um, for everyone that is following along. So it will be Saturday pickup, uh, the twenty sixth for Christmas and the second, uh, for New Year's. So just kind of keep that in mind. Both are Saturdays. Um, one last yard waste and Christmas tree pickup will be January ninth, which is that Saturday before we go into hiatus, um, during the colder winter months. And then we will begin pickups again in April. Um, we recently had a sustainability, um, commission meeting. Um, a lot of the events that we were trying to plan for the fall have, um, become pushed back further into later spring. Um, but we are working hard in developing a composting program. Uh, socially distanced, of course. Um, we're going to look at holding some classes for composting, uh, distribution of composting bins for residents that are, uh, looking to get into that type of thing, um, especially with, uh, COVID happening, um, trying to, um, use this um, composting material. Uh, people have really gotten into gardening and growing vegetables, um, and being a little bit more self-reliant on those types of things. So we will be in touch in the early spring when we have developed our composting programs and distribution of those bins. Um, and we're still working on some of the details, uh, for those. Um, so that, uh, does conclude my report. But after all the reports, Larry, I do have, um, just a couple of things to mention, um, for both Barney and David later on.
Certainly. Okay, uh, Streets and Roads Commission, uh, Councilwoman Washama, go ahead.
Unmute myself here. Okay, uh, good evening to everybody and happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas to everyone. Uh, and I too am looking forward to the, the first menorah lighting. That's, that's just terrific. So without any further delay, I would like to tell you that our last meeting was held on Tuesday, November tenth. We talked about a variety of issues. Uh, one of the concerns was that there is a crosswalk that's on West Watersville Road right by the middle school. And it wasn't, it, it was sort of worn, worn away and the crosswalk didn't have a place where the children could cross and get onto the sidewalk, uh, readily. And the reason for that is because it was for the older school and they never did away with that crosswalk. And so we talked to the Department of Public Works and I actually have to drive over there and see if anything was done. I probably won't have anything done until the springtime because it was starting to get rather cold. Uh, but that crosswalk will be done away with. There's another one that's further up the road and that one will be used. So with that said, I also like to reiterate, I'm not sure if I said this at the last, uh, report that I gave in November, but there was also some concern about maybe having a light or a four way, excuse me, it's more like a four way stop, uh, at West Watersville and North Main Street, right by the schools and right by the, um, firehouse. However, the problem is that that is a state highway. And so therefore we cannot do anything. We can't make that a four way stop. So uh, we would have to contact the, the state in order to get anything done. And I, I don't believe, I think I spoke to Barney about it and it doesn't look hopeful. But we did address that for a couple of people that did bring that to our attention. Uh, there also was a lot of, uh, concern with the uh, speed on Rising Ridge Road. As you know, that's a collector road that was put into the town, gosh, about thirty years ago to offset the traffic. And it's doing its job. There's a lot, a lot of traffic on Rising Ridge, uh, Drive and it's, the speed is just very excessive for most of the time. So there's some issues there that we're, uh, looking at. There was a crosswalk that was asked by one of the residents that lived down, uh, closer to Prospect. And we were looking at some traffic studies to evaluate that situation. Uh, so there's been actually a lot of different issues, uh, addressing crosswalks or speed. And so we do have a lot of traffic studies that will be done between now and the next time we have our meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, January fifth, and that will also be a Zoom meeting. Uh, so stay tuned for that. I'd like to also thank the people again who worked on the hometown um, banners, uh, the hometown hero banners. You know, it was a project that we had no idea what we were getting ourselves into. And there was four of us, myself, Melissa Thorne, Suzie Way, and Suzie Way was the one that brought it to our attention, and, um, Mary Hushower. And so we really just, you know, was the blind leading the blind in a lot of ways. And we, we got a little ambitious with sixty banners, which turned into sixty nine. But I have to tell you that so many people have contacted us and they, they just are so happy to have something fun to look at during this COVID crisis. So I want to thank them. I want to thank the Department of Public Works. I want to thank S and K Printing, who did such an outstanding job, and also, um, Spark, Sparky Electric, who came to our, um, our crisis when we didn't have the, the right bucket left to get all these banners up. So it was a big job and the Department of Public Works did an outstanding job. But because it was such a big job, initially we weren't going to keep them up for the winter. But we are going to hold our breath and keep them up. And, uh, this way we'll make it a lot easier for the Department of Public Works. And with that said, um, when I talked to the Department of Public Works, you know, I was, I was really holding my breath when I told them that we had a total of sixty nine banners because that's a lot of work. And they were so happy and so honored to be able to put them up that they told me that I could get just as many next year. So I'm not sure how we're going to work this. Uh, we would like to open it up again, probably mid-January of next year. So if anybody's listening who didn't get the opportunity to get your banner up this year, I think we're going to have another opportunity. But I have to talk to the mayor and my fellow council people and see if there's room in the budget uh, to keep this going. And if so, then we'll, uh, in January, hopefully I'll be able to give you some more information. And hopefully we'll still have the Mount Airy Messenger. We'll get all that information there as well as, uh, and social media will be on the town website. Uh, so we're hoping to be able to open it up to some more banners and we'll be able to then uh, add those to the existing sixty nine that will be up. So let's hope for not a real severe winter. So I want my banners to, uh, to still look really good. All right, um, the last thing is I just want to thank all my fellow uh, council people here and the mayor. You did an extraordinary job during extraordinary times. And I know everybody is very appreciative of all the special things that you did to keep normalcy and turn alive. So thank you very much and happy holidays to all of you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next is a Waters, uh, Sewer Commission Special Projects. That's myself. And let's see, at the last, uh, the November Water and Sewer Commission, uh, uh, member John Cherry is still working on the tiers of, uh, in, in case we have a drought of water restrictions that could be placed on the town. That's something that'll be eventually be reviewed by the mayor and, uh, and then we'll figure out what we need to do to actually, uh, uh, make that a legitimate prod, product. So that's what we've been working on. Uh, our next meeting is December ninth, so a couple of days from, from now. But it's at seven P M. So we'll be able to, uh, hit the volunteer dinner and then and, uh, come home and, uh, zoom on that. So, uh, so that's what's up with the Water and Sewer Commission. Historical Society, they had their quote raffle, uh, that we had mentioned last month, and I believe they raised about fifteen hundred dollars for the Historical Society and the drawing was held on November thirtieth. And the quote was one by a local family, the Lambert, uh, family. And so that, that went well for us. Uh, Mackenzie, the caboose is closed due to the COVID thing. However, the museum is staying open. Uh, as long as they have volunteers back as, as those days, uh, there. And it's open Saturday and Sunday, noon to four, the museum is. And then the, uh, as council member Munder mentioned, uh, the gingerbread family has moved into the caboose. And they're in there baking cookies and you should go by and see what they're up to. It's, it's pretty crazy. So Mary invited him to her house. Ashley spent a night in my garage. And then moved into the caboose. So, but anyway, nice people, big heads. So, um, and let's see, already mentioned the museum. So that's, uh, oh, the other thing is, uh, uh, you may not know it out there in, in TV land, but, uh, the museum has some great gifts uh, in there. So if you go into the museum Saturday, Sunday, noon to four, uh, they have hats, they have T-shirts, they have cookbooks. They have historical books. Uh, and then they have lots of little novelty things that, uh, that you might want to put in a kid's stocking like train whistles and little caboose bangs and things like that. So, uh, include that in your shopping tour on Saturday and Sunday, uh, for some quick gifts for your loved ones. Okay? And with that, I would say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. And, uh, uh, forward to Thursday as well. Go ahead, mayor.
Uh, just to cut you off, but a question on the, uh, the train station, Larry, those lights are new, right?
Uh, which lights?
The lights that are shining down from the roof down onto the caboose?
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, and, and I see Barney's still logged on there, but I, we saw the electrician out there. He's been working most of the month of November to get those lights lit up. So, so now we have the, uh, had the lights coming down and, and really showing off, uh, Mackenzie, the caboose at nighttime.
Great. And so a couple of, and I mentioned the other council members. I forgot to mention Larry because I've worked with him on other issues related to the messenger. But, uh, certainly Larry can bring up Historical Society points, uh, the caboose points, rails, trails, all very valuable things with messenger. But I think we got there. Patty, the one thing I did want to say about that crosswalk, we actually met with the state highway probably about, I don't know, eight years ago. Barney can fill you in. They did a study. We fought to get, and I even told him, I said, okay, forget about the study. Let's just look at, there's kids walking across that street. Can we please get a four way stop? I know the facts aren't there, but let's look at this emotionally. Still could not get it. So I think you're going to find that we did hammer it. I don't know that enough has changed for them to do another study, but we worked hard years ago. Nobody would have known that. It's been about eight years ago. Barney would know.
Well, that's good to know. That's very good to know because I, you know, I just feel like every time we reach out to the state highway administration, we're not having any luck at all. And I just don't know how do we break that barrier because there are some very, uh, rel-, you know, relevant things that need to be done um, for safety issue. And I, I don't know where. And I, I don't know where, how they're doing these studies, but obviously they're not, they're not taking them during the time period that they need to take them because, I mean, we all see it. So I can't believe that a study won't support what we're seeing with our own eyes.
I know. And just saying, just like you know, they did come on site. Rita Mischer was there. I was there. State Highway was there. They were on site on this one. And we really went at them as hard as we could. We failed.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I think maybe just when we're trying, I mean, if that was eight years ago, maybe the study would show something different. So we'll reach out to them one more time and just see. But thank you. Thank you for that.
Sorry, Larry. Thank you, sir.
That's okay. You're doing fine. So appreciate it. Okay. And next is a town administrator report. I'm going to make David actually come on, turn his video on. So. Oh, there you are. Hey, David. Good to see you. So, so I went through your report. We all got a copy of it. And, and number four is the community development. It says a community development department just wrapped up their shop local contest to encourage citizens to invest in our local businesses. Let's see, and planning holiday events, et cetera. So I wanted to give you a chance, or perhaps you would defer to another member of the staff, but I heard that was a very successful, the, the shop local event was very successful.
Yeah, I don't want to steal Gina's thunder. I, I, I'll drag her in here to give you some of the details. The only thing I would mention before I hand off the baton to her is that if people weren't aware, we are teleworking. We do have skeletal crews coming in and out of town hall. So we're processing the mail and paint, water payments and signing checks. And so we're functioning. We've, we've had actually a, a trial run back in March. So we've kind of got this down pat. Fingers crossed that's, this will be the end very soon. But so if anyone's having any difficulties, it should be able to get through to us on the phone. We got the phone set up to transfer. So if anyone has any glitches, please let us know. But I think we've got, got things working, functioning. Maybe not at a hundred percent, but ninety eight. It's, it's always better to have people in person. But I'll tap this off to Gina about the shop small success.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to talk about it because it was a very successful campaign. We still continue to have entries tomorrow at four thirty is the dead dime to submit any receipts for the shop small contest. As of probably about five o'clock today, I totaled a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars worth of receipts for Mount Airy businesses. So great job, Mount Airy. Thank you for coming out and supporting the businesses. We do have the drawing on Friday at noon on Facebook Live. And let's see, next week we'll arrange with the winner for the actual check presentation.
All right. That's super. Thank you very much for, for setting that event up. And that, that was a lot of money coming into town. So that's a good thing. So, all right. Next is the town attorney report. Tom?
We're mainly on the Chick-fil-A, PWA, also on the DRA ordinance that got introduced tonight. And then I'm also happy to report, as we'll probably talk about a little bit, in a little bit, that CSX agreed to language that is consistent with what we discussed last time. So I think we have a final agreement that the next step would be to have Mayor Pat sign it on behalf of the town for us to submit to CSX. So looks like
That's great. That's great news. That's still after all this time. So Jason, did you have something you want to add at this point?
I just wanted to quickly address David. If you could hop back on really quickly, in your report, it mentioned that the Nottingham Trail was going to start, but there was no start date. Are we waiting till spring on that?
Yeah, I'm going to, again, defer to Barney. I thought that there was some preliminary work that was being done. Correct me if I'm wrong, Barney.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot back from the developer, but it'd be on, on them to install this. I think they're moving forward. We just, we were just working on the agreement. And Tom, I think we'd finalize, finalize that. And so that, that would allow us to allow them to get started with it. So the weather right now, it's not looking real favorable, but you know, it might have to wait till spring weather dependent.
Okay. And then the other thing was with the paving with the bolts that were replaced at the hydrants at each corner. Is there a timeline that I can give the Nottingham residents as to when that hot asphalt will be put down?
I'd have to talk with Brian. He was handling that, that portion of it. I was handling more of the manhole side of it. So I know he was working with a contractor and I think he had gotten, I think he got your approval maybe at the last meeting. So I don't know if that's happening again before the winter or not.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
The issue with that is that to put down hot asphalt, you have to have close to forty degrees and rising. I don't think we're going to see forty degrees and rising for a while. So it might be a springtime issue.
Saturday is fifty. So if you can knock that out, please.
All right. All right. I'm about to try to wrap it up unless somebody sticks a hand up. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting, go into closed session and following that closed that will be the, the end of the 2020 council meeting. Is there a second on that? I'll second. Okay, Councilmember Munder, a second. And we'll do a roll call across my screen. All in favor, Carl Munder? Okay. And Councilmember Washama? All right, Councilmember Pori.
Hi.
And Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So with that, we'll go into closed session. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to everyone. We'll get through 2020 and we'll see you again in January. We might be back in the council chamber or we may be stuck in Zoom. We're just going to keep an eye on COVID and see how it goes between now and then. So thank you so much and have a great night.
Have a great holiday, everybody.